Good evening. Welcome to the March 7th Planning Commission meeting. I would like to ask you to please stand and join us in the invocation and pledge led by Darrell Dawson.
Heavenly Father, we come now to thank you for all the many blessings that you bestowed upon us. We thank you, God, because we realize that it's in you that we live, that we move, and that we have our being. We ask, oh God, that you will be merciful to us right now. Continue to show us your grace as we go into this meeting. Ask, oh God, for wisdom, knowledge, and understanding to make the right decisions for our community. And we ask, oh God, that you will continue to bless our community. Continue to lead us and guide us in the way in which you would have us to go and do things in this city of Brunswick. In Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first thing that we are going to do is review the meeting procedures. They're on two pages, okay. The planning staff presents the application request to the planning commission during the staff's report. This report evaluates how the proposal conforms to the Glen County zoning ordinance and other applicable regulations and conforms to the comprehensive plan when applied to zoning matters and ordinances. Applicants shall have the opportunity to present their request to the planning commission. It is the responsibility of applicants to make presentations on request and to address any conditions or factual findings with which they do not agree. Public hearings. Public comments on public hearing items will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side with a maximum of five minutes allocated to each speaker. Site plans. Public comments on site plans will be limited to 15 minutes for each opposing side with a maximum of three minutes allocated to each speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the time allotted. The applicant may then provide a rebuttal to any testimony. The chairman may terminate testimony if it becomes repetitive. The chairman will terminate a speaker's time if the speaker begins personal attacks. Your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. Are there any planning commission announcements?
Good evening, Commissioner. Stephanie Leaf, planning manager. Just two quick things. This year, we are working on a comprehensive plan update for Glen County. And this week, senior planner Maurice Postal did send a link out to all the planning commissions for a link to a community survey for the comprehensive plan. So if you feel free to spread the word on that. We're definitely looking for as much input as possible. And the second thing is the Brunswick area transportation study, which is our, which is called BATS, and our transportation planning organization for the county, is holding a public open house this Wednesday from four to six at Upworth by the Sea. And it's in regard to a corridor study for Sea Island Road. And that's from Demory to the Sea Island Gate. So it'll be a public open house for anyone to just drop in between four and six. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Okay, the first item on our agenda under general business is to approve the minutes of the special call meeting held on February the 7th. Commissioners?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the minute of the special call meeting as presented. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? The minutes are approved. Okay, approve the minutes of the regular meeting held on February the 7th, 2023, subject to any necessary corrections.
I have one minor correction, and it was on the Chick-fil-A. It, I questioned the applicant agent on buffers and fencing. And the report said silt fencing, and just remove the word silt. It was all, no big deal.
Okay.
That's it.
Anything else?
Madam Chair, I second the motion. I'm sorry, the amendment to the minutes.
Okay.
You're seconding?
No, I didn't know.
You're right.
I tell you, I'd like to make a motion to approve, subject to my one revision previously mentioned.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? That has been approved. Okay, the next item on our agenda, ZM 53456735, new Jessup Highway parcel rezone. According to this, this will not be on our agenda tonight. Is that correct, Ms. Leaf?
That is correct. This will be a renotice for the April 4th MPC meeting, because they did make some changes to the zoning request.
Do we need to defer that?
No, sir, you don't need to take any action. We just wanted, because you did defer it from the last meeting, I just wanted to, you know, keep it on the agenda and let you all know. But it's, there's just no action necessary. It will be completely renoticed for the April 4th, reflecting the new zoning request. It's no longer being requested for a mobile home park. They are requesting medium residential for multifamily.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anything else, Ms. Leaf?
No, that's it for that one. Yes.
Okay, so the next item on our agenda is, excuse me, is in the public comment period. I mean, it's a public comment item, SP 5360, 118 Carteret Road, pole barn site plan approval. And Ms. Leaf is here.
Thank you. This is SP 5360. This is an existing business. And they are adding a 2,400 square foot pole barn to have storage and parking. As I said, it is an existing site and is currently Green's HVAC doctors. And these are your possible actions. Thank you.
Commissioners, do you have any questions? Ms. Leaf? Okay, would the applicants like to come forward and address the, address the commissioners to tell us about their, what they have, what they're asking for?
Evening. It's just a stor-
Sir, would you state your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Carrie Green.
Okay.
It's just a shelter, just to park our vehicles up under, little extra storage, something useful.
All right, sir, thank you. This is a public comment period. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and speak in opposition of this approval? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and speak for this proposal? Okay, hearing none, seeing none, the public comment period is closed.
Madam Chairman, could we go back one second? I just had a question for the staff concerning the site plan. And this is a pre-existing condition out there, but the building is in violation of setbacks on the side. Nothing needs to be done about that for, with the approval?
For the existing building? Correct. Yeah, it's existing, non-conforming. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve as presented.
We have a motion to approve?
I'll second.
We have a motion and second. All in favor? It is unanimous. It's approved. Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a public hearing. It's ZM 5281 Glen New Hope Plan Development District Amendment. Ms. Leaf?
All right, this is Glen New Hope, ZM 5281. And this application was originally before you, back in December. And the applicant at that time was interested in making some changes to the PD, but wanted to kind of flesh out exactly what they wanted to do on the site. So they have been working on that. So there were several other deferrals. It was from December 6th to January 10th, from January 10th to February 7th, and February 7th to tonight. And so they- And so they did resubmit what they are interested in doing on March 2nd, and so that is what's in your packet. So there were some changes in the, to the PD texts and the master plan. And this is the property, North End 17, this is New Hope. And so I did, just in case we needed to refer to anything, I do have the PD text that was submitted on March 2nd, just on these slides. In general, you know, some of the changes, they did let me know that they've been in conversation with the architects working on the film studio, and so there were some specific requests that, that came out of those conversations. They wanted to go ahead and add into this PD text to make sure that what they wanted to do with the film studio would be allowed and they wouldn't have to do any changes. And this is, this is the current PD master plan. So this is currently what was approved in the last amendment, just for your reference. And then this next one is the, this is the proposed PD master plan. This is what was also submitted on March 2nd. And so there's some, like the conservation area, up in this area, it's shown as conservation and university use, and that was kind of what they were sort of looking into a little further, was some of the university educational related uses on the conservation property. And Mr. Hightower from Robert Civil Engineering is here this evening, and either he or Mr. Barber, the owner, can go into more detail about what their, their plans are. These are your possible actions. And I'm happy to answer any questions, and both Mr. Hightower and Mr. Barber are here.
Do any of you have any questions for Ms. Leaf? Mr. Hightower, would you like to come forward?
Yes, ma'am. Jake Hightower with Robert Civil Engineering. Thank you for the time tonight. We ask that you approve this PD text as presented, and we are available for any, to answer any questions. But Ms. Leaf did a good job explaining what the reason for the deferral was, which was, when we first came to zoning, when it was already in the queue, there was a discussion with the university. So in that board of commission meeting, we did say, we will be coming back for an amendment to this master plan. And then also, like Ms. Leaf stated, there is a architect on the team who has built studios, and so we're just basically taking their, their suggestion in terms of uses to further define the uses allowed on the property specifically related to the movie studios, and those are the changes reflected in the PD text. So thank you for your time and available for any questions.
Commissioners, do you have any questions of Mr. Hightower? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, so I'm asking if there is anyone in the audience who would like to come and speak in opposition to Glen New Hope Plan Development? If so, would you please come forward and state your name? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come and speak on behalf of Glen New Hope Plan Development? If so, please come forward and state your name. Hearing none, seeing none, the public hearing comment period is closed. Commissioners?
Madam Chairman, I make a motion to approve ZM 5281 as presented.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and second. All in favor? So we have, we have, it passes with, with one abstention. The next item on our agenda is ZM 5339, 198 South Road Rezone. And Ms. Leaf is here.
Thank you. This is ZM 5339, 198 South Road Rezone, and there's two applications on your agenda tonight that are in the same neighborhood on Blythe Island, and all the properties are owned by Mr. Douglas Spalding. So this application, the property is currently zoned R20. It's a 1.21 acre site on Blythe Island. They currently can have a single-family home, 20,000 square feet is a minimum lot size. Mr. Spalding, who owns the property, is interested in placing a mobile home on the property or mobile homes on the property. And in order to do that, the rezone, the zoning would need to be changed. So he is requesting MH20, which would allow a single-wide mobile home. There is also an M20 zoning district that we see in a few spots on Blythe Island. I'll show you the map that shows that. And that's a manufactured home, typically a double-wide won't be allowed in those zones, but the MH20 would allow a single-wide mobile home. Mr. Spalding has stated that he previously had mobile homes on this property years ago. The mobile homes have been since removed from the site, so that is vacant. And so because that was a non-conforming use, in order to place a mobile home again on the property, it of course would have to be rezoned to allow that. This is the property where the star is located. This is Blythe Island Highway right here. And just as you can see, so this is R20, the yellow is R20, so you see a majority is R20 in this area. These kind of lime green colors are the M20, so that's where there would be manufactured homes allowed. So there's a few of these in a few locations. This is a character area map from the comp plan, survey of the property. And these are your possible actions. And Mr. Spalding is here this evening with any questions, I'm happy to answer them as well.
Commissioners, commissioners, do you have any questions of Ms. Leaf?
Ms. Leaf, I have one. How long has it been since a mobile home's been at 198 South Road?
I, I'm not sure the exact number of years, but I, I believe when Mr. Spalding stated it was, I mean, over 10 years, I think it's been a good bit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Leaf, I do have a question as well. I think you showed the property being a little over one acres. Okay, so that would be just for one, the rezone would be for just one mobile home?
So currently, it is a, it is one, one lot, but with that zoning, right now, it's, it's well-inseptic in that location, so they would need to have one acre per dwelling unit. So right now, based on the square footage, they would only be able to do one mobile home on that property. Now, if there was ever, you know, public water and sewer available, then, you know, they could do one unit per 20,000 square feet and do a subdivision. But currently, as, as what's out there, it's just one for that site.
I just want to make sure I'm correct, Ms. Leaf. The green area is the area now. There's only three in that location that is on mobile home?
Correct. Yes, sir.
And it's MH20?
It's M, yeah, M20, M20. It's not MH20, it's just M20. So there's no other MH20 in that area.
Okay.
And that's, this request is for MH20.
Stephanie, this property's never been rezoned before. Did I get, am I picking up on that when you said that the mobile homes were non-conforming?
That's correct. Yeah, it's, it's been R20, you know, as far as, you know, back to, back to zoning. So the mobile homes that were on the property before, you know, were not, not allowed under the zoning. They, you know, could have been there prior to zoning, but it would have been an existing non-conforming use for the years that they were there.
Okay, thank you.
And, and go over the difference between M20 and MH20 again.
So the, the M20, under our current zoning ordinance, that is a manufactured home and a double-wide is what, what is allowed on those properties. That's the M20. But the M lowercase h20 would allow a single-wide mobile home. So that's the primary difference between those two.
Any other questions? Okay, would you ask Mr. Spalding to please come forward and, and address the commission? Commissioners? Go ahead. Would you like to introduce yourself, please?
Do you want my name first? Gene Spalding. Anyway, I've had these lots since 19, early 70s, and I had them rented out. When I got it zoned for mobile homes, it was a temporary zoning, and I never did get it changed. And I, I went down to get septic tank permits from a fellow named Jenkins that was working for the county, and he turned everything I had down. And then that's been probably eight or 10 years ago. But I had rented them for about 40 years. And I don't know if the temporary zoning is what did it or what, but I never had a problem with the septic tanks. And why he did it, I don't know, but he put me out of business.
Yes, sir. Mr. Spalding, I'm the commissioner from that district, District 1, and I will tell you, I have had a lot of phone calls about this, in, in opposition to it.
I'm sure you have.
Probably more than any other rezoning I've ever been a part of. And frankly, sir, I just personally, I'm just one vote up here now, but I think it's the wrong place at the wrong time to have it zoned, mobile home. There's, there's, there's only three mobile home lots there. There's some very expensive houses in that area, and I'm just, I'm, I'm not going to be able to support it.
Well, there's a trailer on that, are we doing South Road and the Davenport?
No, sir, we're only doing 198 South Road now.
Well, there was trailers all around it, just some back of it?
Well, they're out of zone, because they, Ms. Leaf told us there's only three mobile home lots in that location that's zoned for that. So, so there's mobile homes all around there?
I thought there were. They, they, they used to, when I had the place, they, they were there, and then I guess some of them built houses. I don't really know.
Yes, sir. Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Spalding.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of Mr. Spalding? Okay, this is, this is, again, is a public hearing, and so if there is anyone in the audience who would like to come forth and speak in opposition to this rezone, please come to the podium, state your name, and address the commission.
Hey, Gene, how you doing? How you? Did you want to sit down? No. My name's Bill Harbison. I live on Highway 303 on Blythe Island. We're on, our little slice of Blythe Island is the part that is on the opposite side of the highway from the convenience store and the motorcycle club. And we're a developing little part of that. The lot that you're looking up here doesn't show exactly the way it's situated. That lot sits in between two really, really nice houses. One of them cost $240,000, $50,000 when it put up, and they've recently spent another $100,000 modernizing it. It sits in between that one and a brick house. They want to put a rental trailer in between two houses like that. That's just not right. I would like to address the other two, because they go in a package.
Sir, we have to deal with this one, one at a time.
Okay, I apologize.
Sorry.
The point is, they want to put that in there and rent it out. That has never worked over there very well. And I can tell you this, I cannot speak for our group, but I've seen at least 20 come in here tonight that are my neighbors. Thank, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition? Please come to the podium and state your name.
Michael O'Connor, I live on 6372, sorry, nervous, Blythe Island. And that's my concern too, because there's a lot of people who are building in there, who are upgrading and, you know, trying to, we're trying to make it look a lot. We don't want mobile homes in there, and then rent out. He ain't got to see them, but we got to see them. The ones there before, they, there's one there sitting on the property that's not maintained right. We got to look at those all day, because they just rent them out and go on. I just, I just oppose it.
Sir, are you saying there's one that sits on that property now?
There's one in the back, I'm not sure, but it looks vacant. Okay, well, we'll get to that, we'll get to that.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to come and speak in opposition? Please come and state your name, sir.
My name is Tom Moreau. Thank you for letting me speak. I live on Davenport Road, and you can see the big gray space there. That's the iHeartRadio 5 Acres. Where the, right next to it, across the street, about 200 feet up the road, is where the proposed lot, or what we're discussing. I have nothing against mobile homes. In fact, I have lived in a mobile home at different times. But as Mike O'Connor just said, what happens sometimes is somebody rents a mobile home, they get trashed, the neighborhood gets, looks bad. A lot of us have spent a lot of time, effort, and money trying to maintain that neighborhood, and I just have a bad feeling about the whole thing. And that's why I'm, I'm objecting to it too. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak in opposition?
Yes, ma'am. My name's Johnny Dixon. I live on 203 Davenport. If you see the, one of the green spots, I own that trailer. It was repossessed. When I bought that trailer, I was told if I ever moved it, I could never put another on it. And we was told, back when all this was going on, a few years ago, with the same pieces of property, Glen County made a move of the trailers. Because I was involved in it. We all come up here and fought it then. We've been fighting it for, golly, I don't know how many years. And they told us there'd never be no more mobile homes over there, rental property. If you pulled one out, you couldn't put one back in. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to come and speak in opposition to 198 South Road
Steve Botello. I own the last two lots on South Road. One of them's got a house on it. One of them had a house burned down, and I don't want to see any mobile homes in my neighborhood.
Is there anyone else who would like to come and speak in opposition?
My name is Thomas Corson. I live at 234 Blythe Island Drive, and it's a brick house, and I, I love it, and I don't want to see any more trailers put in the area. But see, I also have to live with the fact that I owned three trailers at the beginning of Blythe Island Drive, side by side, and they were all on the same piece of property as the one unit. But anyway, I had a good time renting out two of them. They paid good, they took care of the, the trailers, but one of them, he trashed it, and the last one, and it was a small double-wide. And I don't want to see anybody else get in the area that's going to do that to, to any of the neighborhood or houses. That trailer's still sitting there empty, waiting to be refinished out. I don't own the trailers anymore. I wanted to get away from that mess, and I did, thank goodness. And I mean, I'm not saying everybody trashes their trailers and, and all that stuff, but it would be better off to have it set as a house for a nice family to build and enjoy the neighborhood with the rest of us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to come and speak in opposition to 198 South Road
Tim Brown, I'm 235 Davenport. When I've, I've been there since 2001. And buying conditionally was for the fact that I was told that you could not put more trailers on Blythe Island, that there was a moratorium. So as I've lived there, I went ahead and did $150,000 worth of remodels, upgraded, knowing that I was investing in my property, and to have the neighborhood change and lower And to have the neighborhood change and lower my property value is not okay with me. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to come and speak in opposition to 198 South Road Rezone?
Hey, I'm Marie Toler, and we live on Banks Drive. I bought the house because it was a rental. And we have spent a ton of money remodeling our home. So we are against mobile homes being able to be moved in there and rented out for the process of the fact that it will devalue our property.
Is there anyone else who would like to come and speak in opposition to 198 South Road Rezone? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come and speak in favor of 198 South Road Rezone? If so, come to the podium and state your name. Okay, hearing none, seeing none. The comment period is closed. Commissioners?
Okay, I don't want everybody to speak up at once here. Let's see, let me get to the, get to the agenda item. All right. Madam Chair, I offer a motion to deny the rezone for ZM 5339.
Second.
We have a motion in second, all in favor? It is unanimous.
I'm sorry, the, the next item, sir.
So we still move forward with this?
I believe so. Yes, ma'am, sorry.
Okay. All right, so next on the agenda is ZM 5340, 171 and 179, Davenport Road Rezone. Ms. Leaf?
This is ZM 5340, this is 171, 179, Davenport. Also rezoned from R20 to MH20, two of the mobile homes. And these are two separate lots. 171 is a half acre, 50.50, and then 179 is .59 acre. And again, the applicant did state that he did have mobile homes on these properties some years ago as well. So this is Davenport right here. And the property that was just part of the discussion prior was up here. So these are the two lots. There is an M20 property adjacent that does have a mobile home on that property. And these are your possible actions. Thank you.
Okay, the applicant has left. But commissioners, do you have any questions, Ms. Leaf? The applicant has left, so he will not be able to come and advocate for himself. Is there anyone in the audience, this is a public hearing, and is there anyone in the audience who would like to come and speak in opposition to the rezone on Davenport Road?
My name's Bill Harbison, I've introduced myself before. Years ago, my fiance decided to come down here, stay with me. She had just bought a brand new mobile home in the Atlanta area. So I had to find a rental lot to put it on. Went to all kind of little parts around, I couldn't find anything because she was used to having a swimming pool and clubhouse and that stuff. Anyway, I found a lot on Davenport Road. Happened to be 198 Davenport Road. That's next door to 171. It belonged to Mr. Gene Spalding. I rented it from him. By the time I said, it's going to take me a month to get this lot ready where it could even have a place put on it. It was that bad. Eventually got it cleaned up enough, brought the mobile home down and set it up. The house next door to it was a really small little double wide, had a real nice young lady lived in there, had two little girls. Now my lot's supposed to come with maintenance. Going to take care of it, he never touched it. I had to do everything to my lot. That poor young girl next to me had two little girls. They didn't even have a clean place to play. So for the three or four years I lived back there, I mowed my place and her place and kept them both up. Gene never touched them, not one time. I tried to buy it from him for years, wouldn't sell it. I said, Gene, when is it that I got to move them, they'll be gone? So I sold it, had the mobile home moved out. Few weeks later, they pulled a trashiest, oldest, broken down mobile home you've ever seen in there. And the people that came with it did just the same, they trashed the place. I mean, they really trashed it. They never cut anything, just threw trash out. And finally, they moved out and it got hauled away. Next one was a little 25-foot camper, where two young men lived in it. They're the ones got arrested on Jekyll for shooting deer at night. Then they whole place got hauled out. Gene does not want these things to live in or build on. He wants to rent them out. And we don't need more rentals over there. The two lots that are sitting there on Davenport Road, side by side, have been grown up overhead high for months and months, right across the street from Mr. Moreau sitting over there. He's had it endure that. Gene finally came out there a few weeks ago and kind of sort of bush hogged it so he could put the posting notices up, the advertisement notices. It took two truckloads to pick up, to haul the trash off from those two lots. They'll go back to being the same thing. We don't need rentals over there. These are, could be beautiful lots with homes built on them. I would never deny anybody the highest and best use of their property. But highest and best use of that property is zones right now is for a home to be built there. Putting nice homes on there. And those two lots are awful right now, they're still grown up. They're about knee-high in trash. I want to tell you about the lot that we talked about before. That lot is nice. I mowed it myself for years.
Sir, you have to stay, you have to stay on this particular lot.
I apologize, I didn't mean to get hurt. But we do not need any more rental over there, and I would appreciate you voting against it.
Is there anyone else who would like to come and speak in opposition of 171 and 179, Davenport Road Rezone?
My name is John Hobbs. I own the lot at the very point there, 155 Davenport Road. So I'm directly next to those two stars. I bought the place close to 10 years ago, spent a substantial amount of money improving the property. And my concern is that the property value will decrease. So that's why I'm opposing it.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to come and speak in opposition to the Davenport Road Rezone?
Again, my name's Johnny Dixon, I oppose that. I live on 203. If you see the green mobile home lot right there, and look at mine, mine's the M12. It's the only two legal trailers on that side. If you look at your back procedures, those was the only two authorized on Blythe Island. And he knows that. You know, and again, if I move mine, I can't move nothing back in. I own a brick house right there, Bob. There I built in 1977. And I try to keep it looking nice, and I want to upgrade it. And I don't want more mobile homes over there for rent. And I own one. I mean, we got, that side of the island's really growing, it's really getting to look good. And we've had some bad experiences. And I'm not blaming nobody because you can't, you can't, you can't tell who you're going to rent to, you know? But I like to leave it just like it is, without mobile homes. When mine's gone, it'll be gone. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to come and speak in opposition to Davenport Road Rezone?
Mike O'Connor, 6372, Blythe Island, just the same thing. Those lots have been, since he's hauled them out, it's just been, hasn't cleaned them up, you know, they just, that's the mentality of it, just, oh, I'll just leave it, it's not my worry. And then just want to clean it when he wants to get it approved. You know, it needs some work done to it, it's been neglected. That's why I oppose it, it just, we don't want no more of that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Steve Botello, again, I'm on the very end of South Road, 121 and 127. I've been there 35 years. I don't see why they would want to change my zoning and my house that I spent a lot of money fixing up just for a rental, really. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to come and speak in opposition of Davenport Road Rezone?
Ditto, repeat last one. But for this one, I was here when the other two were on those properties.
State your name.
Tim Brown. 235 Davenport, distinguished, good-looking, that's me. But the other two, when they were there, that the same guy owned, it was might as well been a horror story, murder mystery movie, the worst thing you've ever seen imagining of trailers is what he had in there. And my fear is it's going to come back the same thing, and I can't afford to have that happen to my, we're the quiet side of the island. We love our side of the island, yes. Keep us quiet.
Keep it with.
Sorry, these are my, this is my extended family now.
But you're not talking to them, you're talking to us.
So if you ever want to come to our quiet side of the island, come on, build a house on those two lots, buy them from them, we'd love you to be there.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak in opposition of Davenport Road Rezone? Okay, is there anyone here who would like to come and speak in favor of Davenport Road Rezone? Hearing none, seeing none, the public comment period is closed. Commissioners?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to deny ZM 5340.
I second the motion.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor? All right, that is unanimous. Next item on our agenda is ZM 5391, Harry Driggers Boulevard Houses of Worship Plan Development District Amendment. And Mr. Postal is here.
Yeah, Maurice Postal, Glen County Planning and Zoning. During the Board of Commissioners' public hearing for the Bible Baptist rezoning, they voted unanimously to authorize county staff to prepare a rezoning action to make all of the churches on Harry Driggers conforming uses. As you know, the PD text for the Golden Isles Gateway PA's PD will need to be amended to add houses of worship as permitted uses in the, these parcels in the residential district of the PD. And these parcels are Golden Isles Baptist, Bible Baptist, and Friendship Ministries Church of God in Christ, which is formerly Church of the Nazarene. And as some of you may be wondering why Bible Baptist is included in this, in discussions with county attorney's staff, they felt that if we only put Golden Isles Baptist and Church of the Nazarene in here, that someone in the future may interpret that as meaning that Bible Baptist is now excluded. So Bible Baptist is included in this rezoning action as well. And this is the zoning map showing all three churches affected by this rezoning action. Golden Isles Baptist down here at 255, Bible Baptist and the Friendship Church of God in Christ across the street. And this is the amendment that we're putting in there, houses of worship on parcels, the parcels that Golden Isles Baptist, Bible Baptist, and Church of, former Church of the Nazarene are on. And to address building height, we put the maximum building height for houses of worship shall not exceed the maximum building height in this district of the planned development, which is 35 feet, except for the maximum building height separately established for the Bible Baptist parcel by ZM 5287, which the county commission approved back in February. Available for questions, of course.
Commissioners?
I have a question for esteemed attorney, Mr. Monford. Mr. Monford, could you please explain to me in layman's terms the problem Mr. Jeff Kilgore has with this?
I'll defer to Mr. Kilgore on what his issue is, but as far as his concerns for this planning commission tonight, there's no issues for you to consider this tonight. I mean, I'll, I want to speak for Mr. Kilgore in terms of what his concerns are or aren't, but this item's proper for the planning commission tonight.
Okay, sir, it doesn't need, we don't need to send it back. We can do everything we need to do here tonight.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I do have a question for staff. Now, would this amendment only include these three parcels, or would that include that area?
No, it would only include these three parcels.
Okay, so if there's another parcel in the area that wanted to establish a house of worship?
They would have to come for a separate rezoning in the future.
Okay.
Okay, well, there's no one here, well, we've, there's no one here from the county to speak.
Except for us.
Except for you guys. Anybody else have any more questions of Mr. Postal? Okay, this is, of course, a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come and speak in opposition of this amendment?
Good evening, I'm Richard Salo. I live across Driggers from Golden Isles Baptist. And I'm, I just have, I have questions. There are churches there now, so I don't understand the reason for this amendment. So that's why I'm up here speaking against it until I understand what's going on.
I believe it's just housekeeping, since they're already in existing use there with the churches, and they're nonconforming use, they want to make them conform, so they're going to rezone the parcels.
So if I, that goes back to PA's, where PA's did not include houses of worship in that area, is that what?
Originally, they did not. That's correct.
Okay. So with houses of worship, I'm assuming it means any, in the future, could be any type of religion, right? You know, I can see a big mosque across the street, someday 60 feet high. And I'm assuming that that zoning would allow that.
No, no, sir.
On those four properties, it would?
On those properties.
On the existing four, but there wouldn't be any additional, is my understanding.
Yeah. And then this step of zoning wouldn't allow a school yet without coming back here? Schools, extra housing, a house of worship, could that come with a school? Could they build a school?
Again, sir, anything like that would have to come before, it would have to go through the, through community development and through the planning commission and to the Board of Commissioners. That's not what we're addressing here now. We are addressing the existing churches that kind of got left out when the PD text was written.
Basically, sir, it's my understanding, this is really a housekeeping thing. Nobody really can explain how this happened, that these churches got in this area. Let's just say, for instance, if one of them had some kind of natural disaster, if they had a fire or what have you, the insurance, if it's nonconforming, the insurance company could say, could say, we're not going to pay you for that structure, we're not, it was nonconforming to start with. There's a lot of issues that they could have with nonconforming, and we're just trying to make those four churches conforming at this point.
Well, thank you. Yes, for the record, I find these, they're good neighbors, so I don't have any objecting, objective from that, objection from that standpoint. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, sir, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come and speak in opposition? Is there anyone else who would like to come and speak in opposition of this amendment? Is there anyone who would like to come and speak on behalf of this amendment? Hearing none, seeing none, the public comment period is closed.
Madam Chair, I'd like to recommend approval of ZM 5391 to the Board of Commissioners as presented.
I second the motion.
All in favor? It is unanimously approved. Okay, the last item on our agenda is the self-storage facility, and Mr. Chris is here.
Good evening. Before you tonight, we have CUP 5384 for 5971 New Jessup Highway Self-Storage. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for many storage, new many storage facility in the Highway Commercial District. The site is adjacent to Dollar General. There are two addresses for this property. However, the applicant labeled the first one, so that is the address that we are using. The proposed access for this property is Cornerstone Lane, so it more than likely would be addressed to that site plan. Applicant is proposing for 300 by 300 storage buildings. Right here is the site. Here's the survey. The required buffering for this property is a Type E along New Jessup Highway and a Type A along the R20 Zone properties. The applicant does intend to leave the buffered areas natural and undisturbed. And right here is a sketch plan of the proposed development. The areas with the hash line are the areas intended to be buffered naturally and with a privacy screen. And here are your possible actions. And that is all.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Chris?
Chris, we're, I'm looking at a digital site plan, and it's a little bit, it's oriented a little differently in my packet than it is up here. Where is Cornerstone Lane? Is, is that off of New Jessup?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, so it goes basically beside the Dollar General, and then the entrance will be in the back, behind Dollar General?
Yes, sir. So this parcel touches Cornerstone right here.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Access would not be allowed through the residential subdivision adjacent to the property in one of that subdivision, because there is a right-of-way that deadens, excuse me, into this property.
No, sir. The access proposed would be off of Cornerstone Lane.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, this is also a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come and speak against?
Thank you. My name is Wade Williams. I'm actually the pastor at Raymond Community Church. We actually are adjacent to this property here that's asking to be rezoned. The Cornerstone Lane that you see there runs adjacent to our parking lot. In that corner, there is a medical facility that sits there. But we own the five acres sitting behind that as well, and so this Cornerstone Lane is actually our easement to that property. The, the use of this property, I'm not understanding why the request is made. We have six mini storages in the immediate area, in this area. None of these are full. Actually, two of them are almost brand-new. We have three vehicle storage lots. We have several container shipping yards. We have two people that sell mini storage units. There is not that I would see a need for this in our area. Two, that, that area has been subject to theft and vandalism, and so it has been something that I have been taking on to move from that area, and I think this is going to propose to that. This area has not been used before primarily because, I don't know if you can see it, well, right behind the Dollar General, at the corner where the, I guess, the units would end, is actually a retention ditch, or a pond, or a drainage area. And so to put an easement through there, the county has yet to allow anyone to do that, so giving access to that property from that area. There is a dumpster sitting right at the end of Cornerstone Lane, and Dollar General's dumpster is sitting on the other way. So you'd have to actually put the entrance between two dumpsters to make it go to that property. I don't know how this creates good viable use for the property, as well as how it increases our, our property values. I would rather, if we are going to figure a use for this property, I mean, I've, I've only been the pastor this, since June, so I've come in shortly to the property there. I get plenty of requests, people coming looking to see if they can rent the facilities. There are a lot of people looking to rent buildings out there for businesses. A use for that would be very, much better use for our neighborhood. That, or either having a daycare unit there. There is only two in our area, and they are maxed out. And so I would like to propose that we do not accept this zoning change for this property based on, you know, what it's going to do to increasing vagrancy and trash in our area, as well as just, that's right next to a lot we use for a lot of outdoor activities in our backyard. And so we have a pond that we use for fishing. We have some trees there, orchard trees that we planted for our, I mean, just some orchard trees. So thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, sir. I failed to ask for the, not you, sir, thank you. I failed to ask for the owner to speak about this property, but I'm going to continue with the public hearing, and then we will ask the, the person here who's representing the owner of this self-storage property to speak. I apologize that I started the public hearing first. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to come forward and speak against Okay, is there anyone in the audience who would like to come and speak on behalf of
Good afternoon, and I'm Zachary Fries, I'm the property owner, so.
Okay.
I guess is this okay time?
Absolutely, go right ahead.
Fantastic, but no, I would love to address any concerns of Mr. Wade Williams. Not quite sure where to start best, but of course, you know, we have an easement on Cornerstone Lane for access. As far as security and trash and, you know, anything that's going to make the area look bad, there will completion be a fence around it with access, you know, to make sure no one's wandering off from the recreation areas. As well as, you know, trash will be maintained, and, yeah, we typically don't have trash, trash issues with our facilities, but, and of course, anything to do, I think there was a request, or maybe a question about drainage, but of course, we'd have to obtain a permit with the county, and, you know, talked with engineering recently about drainage solutions and that type of thing. And of course, I can address any other questions, or?
Now you're speaking on behalf, you're in the public hearing portion of it, so let's see if there's someone else who wants to speak on behalf of it before we then ask you questions, if that's okay with you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, sorry.
Okay, is there anyone else in the audience who would like to come and speak on behalf of this self-storage facility? Okay, hearing none, seeing none, the public comment period is closed. Sir, would you come back and there might be some questions for you?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Mr. Fries, I have a few questions to start with.
Yes, sir.
Well, what kind of fence are you entertaining, putting around the property?
Proposed, we were going to do a chain-link fence with, across the buffer areas, they did, I think we received, you know, one of the neighboring property owners would like some natural buffer, so, you know, we're going to use a natural buffer, but it would be chain-link fence and abutting to the residential areas with the buffer, would have a fabric to provide a little additional privacy.
The people in River Ridge, I think I'm in the right location on a bill. The people that's...
And Vocavilla.
Say that again, sir.
And Vocavilla's in that area as well.
Okay, the people at the very back, where you have the squiggly line?
Yes, sir.
Would you be opposed to putting some kind of real nice fence up there to protect those residential people from?
No, no, sir, I would not be. It's, and I could work with your team or the county's team to, maybe even the neighboring property owners to determine what would be best, but, no, I'm not opposed to that one bit. And I think there's going to be a, if I'm not mistaken, there is a line of trees that provide a little privacy.
There's a drainage ditch there too, isn't there?
There is, yes, sir. It's closer to the back 10-foot of the property, but, yes, sir. But no, we would not, to answer your question, we would not be opposed to providing a more upscale fence solution to...
Okay. Tonight, you're just asking for a conditional use permit. Once you get, if you get the conditional use permit, you'll have to get an engineer to engineer it, and then he'll determine where all the drainage is going to go and how it's properly going to be drained.
That's exactly right. I spoke to, I don't want to misquote you, but I believe Stacy Colbuth, the associate engineer, or assistant engineer at the county.
Yes, sir, Stacy works for Glen County.
Okay, fantastic. But I spoke with him, and like you had mentioned, it would have to be, we'd have to bring in an engineer, make sure the drainage is accounted for, and...
Okay, the area, when you come off of Highway 341 onto Cornerstone Lane, is that actually an existing lane now? Is that a documented, or is that a proposed lane?
No, it's, Cornerstone Lane's an actual lane. It's not classified as a public road. It is a, an access easement between the...
It physically looks like an entrance to that little shopping area, but it is a access easement.
That must, Mr. Carroll was the original developer of this gentleman's church, and I actually did the site preparation. I think they must have added that after the fact, that Cornerstone Lane, that's why I wasn't familiar with it.
Yes, sir.
The area between, the point I was getting to, the area between Cornerstone Lane and the 230-foot wide by 300-foot buildings, is that going to be an open storage space? Is that what that's there for?
No, sir, we're not proposing any open storage space. I was, again, that's the way the property connects to Cornerstone Lane for access, but again, we'd work with the engineer to determine where the fence lines would need to be to best suit the property.
Sir, you've had your time to speak.
Yeah, but this was out of order, and...
Sir, you've had your time to speak, the public comment period is closed. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir, but to answer your question, no open space storage is proposed at this time, just the buildings.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was mistaken. I see a site map of it now, and I'm more understanding of what's going on here now than I was just from that map. I was a little confused because of that map, but I understand it now. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Mr. Fries, the, the only other concern that I've heard about from area people is lighting. And I think that if you were to address the fence issue that Commissioner Boatright recommended, it might decrease the lighting requirement in the back for security. And that would address the other concern that the residents have. They were, they're concerned about light pollution, really, at night.
Absolutely, and I totally understand that. I wouldn't want, you know, light peering in on me and my family when we're trying to sleep as well. So yes, I agree with the, I think the fence solution will help, and I think consciously we can also, you know, maybe face some lights, make sure, ensure they're not facing that way as well, just for added benefit, because we definitely don't want to create any incumbents from the neighbors, for the neighbors.
Go ahead, Neil. One last question. Are you the property owner?
Yes, sir, I am.
Is there a homeless camp back there currently?
On the property, not that I'm aware of. I've walked the property, and I haven't encountered any...
I live out that way, and I see a lot of homeless in that area. As a matter of fact, sir, I think your church feeds them, I guess, because they, I see them on your, in the front of your church most mornings. And I know that there's some camping out at the entrances of River Ridge subdivision, and then over behind the, the old office park, that this would kind of back up to. So I, I'm just curious about that. All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Ms. Leaf, is this the period of time that we need to discuss what kind of fence requirements, if we give them a conditional use permit, would be required?
I'm sorry. Yes, sir, that, that would be my recommendation, is to add that as conditions. If you're leaning towards approving this, approve with the conditions and have those listed out.
Any other questions for Ms. Leaf?
Stephanie, the storage place that we did recently that is over further up Highway 341, gosh, it was on a little creek there. What kind of fence was, did we require there? Was it, was it a 10-foot privacy fence?
I was thinking it was at least 10-foot, and it couldn't be wood, it had to be some kind of mason or structure.
Correct. Is that what you recall as well?
Yeah, the one that I think just south of, south of Popeyes is the one that you're...
Correct, that's correct.
That's right. We, yeah, we did, I'd have to check, our noise on X has been a bit, but I want to say, yeah, it was eight or 10 feet, and it was an opaque fence.
4841 New Jessup Road is the area we're talking about.
Okay.
And the reason I asked that question, Stephanie, the last few pages of our packet included some pictures. One of them was outside of a person's yard, looking, looked like through their backyard and across their pool at the back of the property. They've done a lot of work to that property, and it's very nice, and I would hate to see that, that view be tainted. So I would, I would like to see them match the requirement that we gave the other people for, as far as a fence goes.
Okay. Yeah, we would definitely need to check to see the conditions on, on that, because I don't recall them offhand, but we can look at that. And I know the, the other thing we have done, these have been for the RV parks, not necessarily storage, but I mean, additional, additional buffers too, so, other option.
Any other questions of Ms. Leaf?
And the other thing we need to make sure of, Ms. Leaf, is that the lighting is turned properly. I don't exactly know how we would do that, but I know in the past, we have required the developer to make sure the light is angled properly so it's not shining toward the residential houses.
And you could require a lighting plan that would specify that, that would be, maybe submitted at the time of building permit, just to ensure that. I mean, you know, we do, of course, have a lighting ordinance, but a lot of it tends to be more complaint-driven, though. If, you know, someone says, hey, this doesn't look like it, meets it, we'll send our inspectors out, but that might be another option.
This will still have to go through site plan approval if it's approved tonight, right?
It would.
Yeah, so we can address some of this.
Exactly.
At that point.
Yes.
And a question for the owner too, is, I'm assuming these are all one-story, do you have a height of a building, and also, what about an office or anything like that?
This, this facility wouldn't have an onsite office. Yes, sir, to answer your question, they're all single-story buildings. They, the ridge peaks at eight and a half foot tall, so, eight and a half foot in height.
Any other questions, Commissioners? All right, Commissioners, what is your pleasure? All right, Commissioners, what is your pleasure?
What is... I know somebody's already said it, but what is the zoning of this property right now? Is it zone commercial?
Highway commercial.
Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve CUP 5384 as presented.
I'll second that, madam.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor? It is unanimous. It's been approved. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.